Yeah, everybody said. Okay, Lisa, I'm gonna have you do the pledge tonight. Okay, all righty, here we go. I hereby call the City of Buellton City Council Meeting for December ninth, 2021 to order. If I could get Councilmember Lewis to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
All right, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Claire, if I could get a roll call.
Councilmember Andrisik.
Present.
Councilmember King.
Here.
Councilmember Lewis.
Here.
Vice Chair Sanchez.
Here.
Mayor Sierra.
Here. Thank you very much. If, do we have any reordering of the agenda tonight?
We have no reordering this evening.
Wonderful. Public comments. Do we have, I don't see any speaker slips. This is our public's opportunity to speak about any item they wish to, whether on the agenda or not. Claire, did we have anything come in over emails or?
We did not.
All righty, then I am closing public comment. Moving on to the consent calendar, we have quite a bit tonight. Minutes of November tenth, 2021, Special City Council Meeting. List of claims to be approved and ratified for payment to date for fiscal year 2021, 2022. Year 2022 proposed calendar of city council meetings. Monthly treasures report, October thirty first, 2021. Ordinance number twenty one dash zero three and ordinance of the City Council of the City of Buellton, California, pertaining to the mandatory organic waste disposal reduction. This is the second reading. Resolution number twenty one dash sixteen, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Buellton, California, approving adoption of the groundwater sustainability plan for the central management area of the Santianes River Valley Groundwater Basin. Three more to go. Resolution number twenty one dash seventeen, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Buellton, California, proclaiming the continuing need to meet by teleconference. Approval of memorandum of understanding relating to countywide broadband strategic planning. And last, approval of joint powers agreement with Lompoc Valley Medical Center. Does anybody have questions of staff?
Move for approval.
All righty, move for approval by Councilman King and a tie for second. Your choice, Claire.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Councilmember Lewis.
Aye.
Councilmember Andrisik.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sanchez.
Aye.
Mayor Sierra.
Aye. Thank you very much. And Myrna, thank you for tuning in. Didn't, didn't even need your input on this one. Moving on to presentations. No presentations tonight? Public hearings? No public hearings tonight? Councilmember comments slash items. We'll start with Vice Mayor Sanchez out there. Do you have any comments slash items?
Not at this time. I did, I want to thank staff for all their hard work in the Christmas activities and the turnout was magnificent, I think. And I think everybody, besides, you know, they ran out of food a little bit, but that's a good thing because we're so busy. Anyway, thank everybody involved with that. Appreciate, we all appreciate it. Yes. Thank you.
All righty, thank you. Councilman Andrisik, do you have any comments slash items?
No ma'am, sure did enjoy the food though.
Okay, Councilmember Lewis?
Just echoing Vice Mayor Sanchez's statements. The kids loved it. It was great. They had a great time. And I think everybody missed it after a year of going without. So it was very well done and thanks to everyone that.
Did they get to play in the snow?
No, the baby fell asleep right before we were supposed to go, so we did not do that portion, but we did the breakfast with Santa and great.
Nice. Councilman King, comments slash items?
No ma'am.
All righty, I just had a couple. First of all, again, thanking our chamber, our rec department for an amazing winter fest last Sunday. The breakfast with Santa was great. The parade was a lot of fun. Thanks to our sheriff's department and fire department for participating. And congratulations to Linda Reed for twenty years of service to the City of Buellton. I would like to perhaps bring something back. Nothing urgent regarding signage in our city. The Botanic Gardens was hoping that perhaps we could look at signage, directing visitors who have no clue where our Botanic Gardens are. And it is something that's nice to let people see what wonderful hidden spaces Buellton has. We did signage a few years ago and the signs didn't quite turn out the way we wanted them to. They're a little smaller, hard to see. So if that could come back on a later agenda, I would truly appreciate it. Okay, everybody's okay with that one?
Yes.
All righty, thank you.
I have an item.
Yes, go ahead, sir.
I wanted to recognize the llamas. Today is their day.
Today is llama day?
National llama day. Yes. And they can live to thirty years on average.
Didn't know.
So I ordered you a llama.
I got to see a dolly llama once. That was pretty cool.
That cost more.
Okay.
Lot more.
Okay, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
We're moving on to appointment of Vice Mayor for 2022. Vice Mayor Sanchez has done a wonderful job. He filled in for me. We've got another year to go and we are looking for a new Vice Mayor. Anybody have any ideas?
I would nominate Dave, if it's interesting.
Okay, I will second that. Does anybody else have an interest in Vice Mayor?
I have an interest in Dave being Vice.
It's annual, right?
It is an annual position. Councilman Andrisik had suggested at one point that since the mayor's term is two years, that the vice mayor's term should be two years as well. But it didn't get a whole bunch of.
I'll make a motion again.
One year is good. It gives everybody a chance to learn.
Yeah, all righty.
Well, and because we're four-year terms, I'll pair what Lisa just said is that that gives an opportunity for everybody on a four-year term to have a position.
Okay, that works. Claire, roll call.
Councilmember Lewis.
Aye.
Mayor Sierra.
Aye.
Councilmember Andrisik.
Aye.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Councilmember or Vice Mayor Sanchez.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Written communications?
We have no written communications this evening.
Committee reports. I know Vice Mayor Sanchez did a library advisory committee. What, what did they talk about? Let's mayor.
It was a very interesting meeting and I enjoyed it. The library is fun to be with. Thank you for letting me partake in it. A lot of talk between the Black Gold and, and and the other libraries and we settled a few things and everything's going well. We're gonna have our meetings by Zoom for another couple times and then maybe get back to regular meetings. But that was a good meeting. The other one was Arts and Culture Committee meeting and that was also, it was just Tuesday. And that went well too. Nothing new coming, but we have something on the agenda tonight with, with that and I appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam, those committee meetings, right?
These are committee meetings.
Hey, John, you attended the aquatics meeting, correct? Would you mind? I had to miss that unfortunately and John was able to attend in my behalf.
Yeah, I apologize for missing that. I did go and I'm sorry, I forgot I went to that one. Yeah, the, that's proceeding well. We're, we're gonna be having another meeting soon for the, the board has to approve the MOU for the agreement with the Parks and Rec, so between the city and the Aquatics Foundation and the high school. We should have it wrapped up within, within a month with the, within the next meeting and to carry on. Got on a little quicker time scale with some goals in mind and I think we're looking good. Hopefully, we're on schedule with that.
That's for the MOU, correct?
Right, once that's adopted, then we'll, we have a little window of a couple of years to, if, if it takes that long to get before their, their pool is not usable anymore. So we have to get things going, a little bit of urgency with their pool. We don't, they don't want to throw money at their old pool, so it's coming along. Hopefully, we can get it going.
So all we really need is money then.
Yeah, anybody out there can write us a check. That would be great.
Santa Maria just had somebody write them a check for six point one million for a sports field. So there are people out there. We just have to find them.
What we're looking for. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Councilman King, did you have any committee reports?
No ma'am.
Councilmember Lewis?
No, I was unable to attend the joint task force meeting, so I believe you attended.
I was there.
You did that one since I was unable to attend.
Okay, and Councilman Andrisik, CCWA?
CCWA was canceled because of the calendar. They had, you know, a lot of people already off this, during the holiday time. So I talked, I was there this morning and they, they were apologizing and I said, if it happens, just keep us in mind when you.
Okay, but there's a lot going on there with the state water, so it'll be nice when you get back to a regular schedule.
Yes, we'll have, we were talking about having a do, you know, put a flyer in the publications for the, one of the staff members will give an update on the water position and where, what we're, what we're looking at and where we're, where we've come from.
Do you think it would benefit the council to have Ray Stokes come here for a brief presentation? Or do you think you're, you're handling, you're covering it pretty well yourself?
I think it looks, we've got a nice room over there and we could have seventy five or eight people in there. I think people would find it interesting. And they're, we're having good fortune with, with the water system, availability, people paying their bill.
Good.
Life is good.
Good. Okay, well, I had, I had a couple. We had the joint use meeting. Kyle was in on that one too and our city manager. Basically, we were talking about repairs that have been made to the gym and to the kitchen, a new refrigerator in the kitchen. And we've helped with asphalting and tree trimming. And at present, we have no other current issues between the school and rec or city. Okay. Also, there is concern about school employees vaccinated or tested and city employees that we don't mandate that they're vaccinated or tested yet. So that could become an issue down the line. Right now, it's just, I, I know you were talking, you had a meeting with Superintendent Haggard and so.
We're, we're working through that right now.
Thank you. I had a LAFCO meeting today that wasn't, they were talking about annexing a little part of Waller Park in Santa Maria. North County Subregional, we have our, our joint SB CAG meeting next week. North County was asked to weigh in the Ring Con Trail. There's a half mile trail from Carpinteria and it was supposed to be a six million dollar project that's now ballooned to eighteen million. And we're trying to, we're trying to figure out what to do because if we put eighteen million into a half mile trail, which would benefit Santa Barbara County, it's gonna really impact our 101 widening program. So it's, it's a bit of a tricky, tricky situation right now. Okay, moving on, we have business items tonight. Our first one is discussion and approval of arts and culture project application. This is functional art for the Botanic Garden Wilderness Trail and our contact is Mr. Rabello.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Honorable Councilmembers. I want to thank you again for having in-person meetings. It's so good to see all of you here. The applicant, Charis Clinton, who is here tonight, is working on behalf of the Santinaz Valley Botanic Garden Foundation to complete the new wilderness trail on the south facing slope at the north end of the Botanic Garden. You can see in attachment one, her extensive resume of landscape design work. The foundation has already applied and received a twenty five thousand dollar grant from the Santa Barbara Foundation for the installation of the trail itself and that work should be finished by early 2022. And you have seen your last meeting, the flyers as well in your packet, the map and drawings of that wilderness trail. The purpose of this project is to incorporate functional design elements that enhance visitors' artistic appreciation and cultural education while using the new trail. Specifically, the plans call for commissioning three handmade benches to be installed at vista points along the trail. And you can see in your attachment three, the complete project application. The benches will be designed to be functional, but also to blend in with the microclimate where each is installed. There will be two wooden benches that are proposed to be crafted by Gabiota artist John Bertram. One shaped like a fallen tree and the other will be shaped like waves inspired by the Channel Islands. And that is an example in attachment four. I thought that was stone, but that's actually wood as a wave, so a real artist. The last bench will be sculpted out of a large piece of serpentine rock by Buellton native Lon Etzel. You, if you've been to the Botanic Garden, you've seen the, the map of California on the tortoises and that's another one of his works. So very talented and this would be in that, that serpentine beautiful green stone as well. And that will have symbology, chumash symbology that relates to the chumash mural that's at the east end on the, the storm drain there. So if the council approves funding, the foundation anticipates these benches will be completed and installed by the end of the spring. The grant amount requested is nine thousand seven hundred fifty and that includes the wood, all materials, honor area for the artisans, all the stonemason labor for each bench and retaining wall installation. And of course, any unspent funds are required to be returned to the city. The Arts and Culture Committee discussed the project and recommended approval. The remaining arts and culture project funding in this fiscal year is sixty one thousand eight hundred eighty eight dollars. And with that, again, I'd like to introduce Charis Clinton, whose wonderful new wilderness trail is going to be the backdrop for these artistic benches if the council approves them. And if you have any questions for either myself or there's also Eva and Derek from the foundation too.
Hi guys, welcome. Thank you very much. Questions regarding the, the project? I had one. I, I know you, you put it all in here and I'm trying to visualize this. Is it on the slope going up to like where Meadowview Road is? That's where the slope is where the trail will be? It's not on the river side. It's on the other side.
On the other side. And until this new wilderness trail was actually installed, that was pretty much inaccessible because it's such a steep slope. And that's what is the really neat thing about Charis's design is basically allows visitors to the Botanic Garden to access a whole, I don't know how many, how many square feet or, you know, probably another.
It's a long.
Couple acres maybe of hillside and the views from up there, looking towards the mountains in the south are just amazing.
Wow, so you've been working on the trail already then? Lots of hours of labor and love and little cursing and cussing?
It's, it's very steep slope.
Yeah.
And they, they compacted it to about ninety five percent. So it's, it's basically like digging into rock.
It's not sliding then?
Oh, no.
Wow.
So we're trying to create little areas for plants to get established and they grow in rocks, so it works out okay. Having different areas and different types of plants and base materials. But the surface of the trail is shale, so it will pack down nice as people walk on it. Stays with the water. And the people from LA, the, from the Forest Association, really helped us with pitching it and how to control the water. So basically, the whole trail is designed to have a water flowing where we want it to flow and only where we want to hold it before it then comes down.
Lot of work. Sounds like a lot of work.
It is.
Wow. So we approved this and, and we get going on these benches, which look beautiful. When, when do you expect that people will be able to use the trail and enjoy?
Well, the trail's open now.
Okay.
So they can use it now.
Okay.
The benches, as soon as we install them, we have to build retaining behind them and create the plant areas and everything. So it's, it's a bit of work to get a bench and then we have the office that secure them in place so the kids can't, you know, roll them down the middle or anything.
It's gonna be a little bit of work getting them up there too.
Oh, yeah, that's.
Wow.
But we'll get her done.
I'd, I'd love to volunteer Councilman King and Vice Mayor Sanchez to help get them.
Yeah, hey, thanks.
Let's go see the stone bench.
The stone, yeah, that one looks, that one looks really heavy.
And I, I don't think we're gonna use serpentine for the actual bench part. It's gonna be hopefully in the serpentine area.
Okay.
Serpentine is fractured and it's hard to carve.
Wow.
But it will be something that.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much. Before we make any motions or do anything, I need to open this up to public comment quickly. Does anybody have any public comment? Eva, did you wanna? You need to come to the microphone, I'm afraid. We have a really large audience.
Just to make sure that it's understood that each bench is representative of each section of the garden. There are three of them. So one is representative of Figueroa Mountain. That's where we will be using the stone bench. The other, and there will probably be some chumash carving into it. Tony is very familiar with the chumash legends. I've been working with the chumash for many, many years. So, and we have a. So, and, and we have a very close relationship with the chumash tribe too. The second bench will be at the Gaviota Chaparral area. So that is representative of native plants, both on the valley side as well as the coastal side. And then the third, as Kyle mentioned, will be at the Channel Island section of the garden. So this is really interesting that as you walk the four hundred and fifty linear feet of trail, which is a cardio trail for sure. You, you will see different plants depending on where you're going and all those plants do well in the back. So from each part of the trail where these benches have carefully been located for future use, you have a different experience. So at the first batch, you are overlooking the whole garden and the San Andres Mountains. From the next bench, you're looking into the trees, which now over the past ten years have grown a little bit. So you're, you're really getting a whole different feel. And then from the third bench, you're looking towards west. So sunset. So it's just a beautiful way to not only appreciate the bench and the art of the bench, but also it'll be a really nice representation for you.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment? Okay, I'm closing public comment, bringing it back to council for discussion and possible action.
Second.
Alrighty, a motion and a second.
I'd like to say something in public comment if possible.
We do have a public speaker.
Who is that? Mr. Gregory?
Yes.
Yes.
Gregory, please, go ahead.
Oh, I'm not sure if it's the appropriate time, but, but I wanted to call in support of this, this RDNE campus that I had a chance to visit a couple of weeks back. Is this the appropriate time to speak on that or are we agendizing that for later?
I'm sorry, which item?
The RDNE campus over on Industrial Way. They had a, they had a presentation at the Rec Center a couple of weeks ago.
Oh, that's not on tonight's agenda, but if you'd like, well.
I'd be happy to give you a couple of minutes. Just quickly, since it's not really on the subject, sir.
Oh, sure, sure. It's, oh, I, like I said, I just had a chance to visit it. I thought it was really exceptional. Yeah, they, they brought some stuff forward that they're real, no one's really doing anywhere else. And I thought it was a great opportunity that the city could take to really, you know, really present an identity for itself and set itself apart in a, in a forward-looking way. It gets, gets youth involved. I mean, I've got two daughters myself. I'd love to see them get involved in a project like this and make their, your dreams come to fruition here in, in, you know, in central coast rather than having to go to, to Los Angeles or San Francisco to realize those dreams. It just seemed like if you have a developer that's willing to throw this kind of, uh, this money at a project like this and they could come to life, what a great opportunity for the city. I don't know, it's just, like I said, it just struck me. I wanted to just get a.
I, I appreciate you, I appreciate you calling and your support and thank you very much. I, we're going to get back to, to the item at hand, but I appreciate your input, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We've had a motion and a second. Claire?
Okay, Councilmember Lewis.
Aye.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Councilmember Andrese.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sanchez.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. We have, we've been getting some really good quality projects from our arts and culture. And Vice Mayor Sanchez, you've done a very good job with Mr. Rabello heading that up.
I'd like to thank the council for their support and it's a pleasure working with Kyle and, and the team over there. And excited about the Arts and Culture Committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to our next business item. Consideration of agreement for the operation of Zaca Creek Golf Course with Mike Brown, Director Hess.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of city council. In two thousand eleven, the city purchased the Zaca Creek Golf Course and shortly thereafter entered into an agreement with Mike Brown, which was previously operating under the name of Sierra Turf to operate the facility.
No connection.
And then the agreement has been extended once in two thousand sixteen with an end date for this extension of December thirty-first in two thousand twenty-one. A couple of years ago, Mike Brown did come to the city with several items. He'd like to negotiate in the lease, remove and try to modify as a lot of the items felt were kind of onerous. And based on the type of operation for the golf course seemed a, a little bit more extreme and unnecessary. So it's taken us some time to develop all the changes and incorporate all those changes. And since end of the term of the lease was this time period, it felt appropriate to provide the modifications and incorporate them into the lease term and have that document re-reviewed and bring that back to council, since there was a lot of changes involved. I've provided two attachments to the staff report. The first one is the redline copy with Mr. Brown's comments and concerns and areas he'd like to change and then our responses and modifications to them as well as the review and comments from the city attorney's office as well. Attachment two is the clean version, so it's a little bit easier, should be a lot easier to read with areas highlighted for additional topics that we'd like council to review further and discuss tonight and provide us additional direction. And those items are summarized below. The first one is the term of the contract. The original and proposed term is for five years. Since this is kind of in between from the original contract, it did provide for additional five-year extensions. So that's something that council wants to determine if we want to just do, start this contract as new with two additional five-year extensions or have this five-year period or, you know, the time period for you guys to determine. The second item for your discussion point tonight is regarding the base fees. And that's the lease for the property. The original fees that were attached were one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars per month and subject to modification or renegotiation after two years. That amount has been the original amount since two thousand eleven, when the agreement first started.
That hasn't changed.
That hasn't changed.
Ten years.
Correct. And to provide you some additional information on that discussion, I passed out a spreadsheet tonight that has golf course lease information there. And it's, and it, there isn't a, a specific discussion point on this other than it gives you a basis of what the dollar amount would be on a monthly basis if we were to look at an increase of using CPI, for example. And, and it goes from, from two thousand eleven up to two thousand twenty-one now, since it's been ten years. What it would have been if we went through the approved CPI each year. So that, that's just something that, so we didn't have to do math in our own minds tonight, so that you had a frame of reference on what we are looking at. And this third item is regarding city events. The listy would like to remove or negotiate these items. I think we have, I don't have the redlines in front of me right now. But there were several events included as part of the original agreement that the city, city would be able to put on. So if we wanted to keep those numbers or quantities in there, that's for council discussion.
Quick question?
Yes.
Right now, it's four times a year in the ten years. And I know I'm, I didn't ask you ahead of time, so I don't know that you know the answer. But in the ten years that the city has owned the property, how many events has the city put on?
I don't recall very many.
I, I know we've had a chamber mixer there. We had that incredible.
The crab, the crab fest.
I'm trying to think of what else. I, the car show, but I don't think, was that a city event? No. Yeah, yeah, that's what I was wondering. We don't, it hasn't happened very often. And COVID, of course, yeah. Okay, sorry to interrupt you.
That's okay. Next item is regarding Exhibit B, the golf course improvements. All the items on the list were taken care of. We, we do have ongoing repairs, such as like the fence work. We've, we've addressed the items that were there originally, but that's in kind of an ongoing item that we have to just include in our CIP. But we left exhibit in there in case council or Mr. Brown has any other large type items that want, if you want to discuss and include or, or whatnot.
And the city has paid for most of the, I, I, I hate to say it this way because I know that Mike puts a lot into the maintenance of the golf course itself because it's, it's pristine. But the city's paid for like the roof.
Right.
And the patio.
Correct.
Okay, so tree removal.
Sorry to interrupt, but we just put fifty-five hundred dollars if we're doing a patio on in the sun shade, all of the stuff that is out there.
City. Got it. Is that when I saw you guys up on the roof spreading all that stuff around? Got it. Thank you.
The next item is Exhibit C, the golf course operations and specifications. I left that for comments with our city attorney and other professionals, since I am not a golf course aficionado. And.
I didn't know our city attorney was. Great. I, I had no idea.
And the, the city attorney's office recommends if, if we so choose, we can hire consultants specifically to review those specific items. And just looking at, um, and how it's set up and the requirements right now, it's general language and verbiage that's, that's in there. Let's see. Next item are the green fees. Agreement states that the licensee should conduct an annual survey of the green fee and rental rates comparable with the market area and recommend changes for the city or city to approve. And this is some, another point of discussion where the city attorney recommends the council agreeing to maybe a pricing structure with annual increases or it's, you know, it's up to you how, how involved you want to be in, in that. Exhibit D is the golf course maintenance specifications. Again, that goes along with Exhibit C is whether or not you want to hire a separate professional to review these items or we just leave it really as that. We, there aren't any operational issues. I just want to raise that point. But Mr. Brown has raised some other specific issues regarding meeting requirements for individual items that were listed on those, on those locations. So we've kind of modified the language in there to say, to leave all the requirements in there or if modifications are necessary as reviewed and approved by the city. So that there is the leeway in there for us to make allowances so that he operates it as, you know, as he sees fit. And they said the city hasn't received any comments or issues regarding its operations and maintenance, so felt that's fine. I just, you know, hesitant without being, you know, the expert in that field to just change the language from the US PGA or whatever the requirements are, are in that lease. So with that, staffs proposing and recommending that the council review these items, we'd like to go over each of these discussion points, point by point, to give staff direction. And if there's additional discussions that we need to do and negotiate, because Mr. Brown is present tonight, to minimize time to expend it at the meeting, if there's additional issues that we need further discussions. If there, it gets to that point that we could extend existing contract period for about sixty days while we do any additional negotiation on outstanding issues. And we will follow council's guidance on this.
Thank you. Before we start with questions, Mike, did you want to say anything regarding the contract comments that you have before we start asking questions and then discussing it?
Everybody, everyone out there, thank you very much. We love being there. We love being a part of it. The comments that we have on the contract, it's sort of a general contract, has things like cleaning cart paths. We don't have cart paths. It doesn't apply. It says fix leaks within twenty-four hours and do the best we can, but we're in breach immediately because we don't have some of the things. They just don't apply. So for us, we gladly sign it and get back to work. But if these are the things that you need in the contract, then we should at least acknowledge that they're not really possible, some of them. So it doesn't mean anything to me. I want to go back to work and keep doing what we're doing. But if you need us to do something else, we're certainly open to it.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, and if I may add too, one of the changes, and I didn't point out on, in the staff report, was regarding the slope. At the, it's the entry slope, right at the driving range area. Right, right. So we've modified the map for the boundaries of operations for the golf course to exclude the scope.
For the river trail?
No, 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 not for the river trail. Right.
Oh, yeah.
Right. So we've made that modification in the map for, for this facility. So I want to make it clear that that's been done and we've already included it in our citywide landscaping contract. So that was included in our P. So that, that's why I didn't put it in here, because we already kind of took care of that earlier in the year. But I want to make sure that we point that out.
Are we all clear on the other slope too? The one that goes along Six Flags where people like to throw their garbage?
That's the slope I'm talking about.
The one. Okay, good. So we are taking care of that.
Right.
And we'll gladly help in any way that we can.
I know.
That's a, that's a big project for us to maintain.
I remember.
And it just became overwhelming and gets to the point. The golf course, to give you an idea, has a gross of about three hundred and seventy thousand dollars annually. Oh, RP now this year, and we're on track to do about an eight thousand dollar profit. We have about eleven employees and we pay about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars in payroll. So it's very narrow margins and what seems like a small project handled that, this or that or the other quickly overwhelms that little golf course. So we do the best we can and hopefully we are doing enough. So.
It's pretty clean. Yeah. Thank you, sir. Okay. Any questions from what we've heard so far before we get down to discussion about the, the talking points? Are there any questions that need clarifying?
Not that need clarifying, but in terms of the base fees, considering it's such a small margin, what is your best case scenario in terms of the lease agreement fees? Cause I see CPI and I see jumping from one percent to point six to three. That doesn't really leave you guys a lot of.
We've seen, we've seen a huge increase in, in fuel and obviously payroll. Everything's gone. So at some point, the equation doesn't work anymore. And we can, we'll go along as long as we can with you guys, as far as we can. And then at some point, maybe we have to just pull the ripcord. Gladly be as transparent as we can with you and if there's some profit, we'll gladly share it with you. But we can manage the numbers as they are now. Are currently shopping for two new owners that are about seventy-five thousand dollars a piece. So you end up trying to lease them for the term or buy and use or et cetera. And we could increase in all the other expenses. We end up either just kind of taping one together and getting one week at a time out of it. Pretty similar to a little Sanford and Son out there with equipment. Scenario for us is we stay just like we are. And the fuel comes down and somehow I can buy a house in the neighborhood that I work in, but right now. That's the reality for us.
Thank you. And Scott, this question's for you, since I wasn't here in, in the Zaca Creek purchase. When the city made the choice to purchase this location, were they doing so? Like what was the rationale behind it? Was it with this desire that it was going to make all kinds of money for the city? Was it for an amenity for city residents? What was the?
That question may be better posed to a couple of councilors who were here during that time.
And, and Ed. Ed was here, you were here, I was here. Go ahead.
Yeah, that basically, that property was worth about three million dollars. And we negotiated with the owners that they would take a write-off in their business endeavors and donate that portion of that money to the, to the city of Bulton. So we basically got that thing for five hundred thousand dollars, which was cheap.
Okay.
And then we, you know, there. And then we, you know, there's not a whole bunch of recreation here in the valley.
So it sat, it sat empty for a long time.
And it did. So we put out an RFP and then Mike and his dad, you know, put an RFP out for us and.
Had no idea. Well, I guess you knew what you were doing, but we thought you didn't know what you were doing.
No, but because, yeah, right. But because of their experience, we went with them and they have been there since eleven, right?
Since the beginning.
So that golf course has been utilized by mostly the people that live here in town. So that's where we're at. So I, I don't want to see these guys go anywhere because, you know, that's one of few outdoor things that you can do in the city of Bulton at this particular time. So.
So the city bought it for an amenity.
We bought it for an amenity for, it was, it's basically in our parks. Am I right? It's in our park system. So that was basically another park.
Okay.
For people to also go out, enjoy playing golf. We do have a really good well there. Yeah.
Which is what worries the golf course.
Really used the fire break when the fire came through, marched across the field and between that.
Okay. I just think it helps when you're looking at, you know, looking at possibly increasing leases and all that kind of stuff. If the city went into this with the idea that we wanted to offer this as an amenity to our residents, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to be looking to increase fees and stuff that would make it less likely to succeed. It's kind of my.
Well, I, I would suspect based on common sense that if we took that over, made it a, a muni course, it would probably end up costing us more than it's costing us now.
Right.
So the route that we're going right now is probably the best course of action.
Madam Mayor.
Questions?
No, it's not a question. Just an, an observation and a truism. We have been blessed for the eleven years with Mike's abilities and his desire to increase the popularity of that golf course. And I've never seen him falter, but if we put up a lot of boards for him to climb over to, to continue, we were doing a disservice to our citizens and for the longevity of that, that golf course. I, I would, I was going to ask if we could maybe set a timeframe for Mike to give us a his, his vision, because I, I was there from the very first day we met his dad. We heard his vision then and he, he hasn't faltered from it. He's continually built a better vision.
Except for your oil. You were going to turn oil into fuel. Do you remember that way back when?
So, yeah, we're still doing it, just at North Branch.
Okay. Yeah, I remember, I remember that. It was just, yeah.
My, my observation was or my thought, because we're gathered here for, you know, this is, this is a time that all of, all the lessees get together and try to hash out what, how can they stay in business and what would, what would improve their, their, their longevity? And, and I, I'd like to see if Mike would maybe in six weeks or give us a, his rendition of what he would like to his long term. What, I, I'm not aware that we've done this for a while, but we did do it.
Review the lease. I think the vision is within the lease really. I don't necessarily think that there's a whole lot outside of the lease.
And Mike's always been very clear about his vision and what he, what he would, he just wants to keep going and doing. But yeah, I, I understand what you're saying too.
Is it possible to ask Greg just one last question?
Greg?
Or yeah, to ask Greg one more.
Greg, you can ask him as many as you'd like.
Sorry.
That's why we pay him.
But when we were talking about the lease and the rents for the preschool, the Zeca preschool, you brought up the idea that we needed to be careful with, you know, market rent and making sure that we didn't get ourselves in any kind of predicament. Is there any predicament to leaving the originally stated base fee of twelve fifty a month without a typical increase every year? Does that put the city in any kind of precarious situation or are we okay if we were to maintain the lease structure?
Question. I think you are okay. I, I would put it this way. I, I think so long as greens fees are not raised kind of out of step with your, the, the payment made to the city, I think you're fine. You are essentially subsidizing, as Councilman, I guess, almost new Vice Mayor King put it, you're essentially subsidizing this course rather than running a muni course. So the fees are lower, they're in keeping with what's primarily a three par golf course, the eleven to fifteen dollar greens fee. So you don't need to increase the amount that the city receives. Particularly now that you've heard from Mike, you've got his, his profit margins, you have a better understanding of his financials. You can make a determination as part of your recreation offerings for the city residents and the greater valley, that if you want this to keep going, you can keep that fee lower and essentially subsidize it rather than requiring him to raise the greens fees to be able to pay you more. And that's what would happen if you raised your fee to Mike is he's going to have to raise the greens fees to the people.
Right. Perfect. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Vice Mayor Sanchez, do you have any questions?
I think I'm thinking more along the lines with the leash, the, I think it's the benefit to the city and, and having our golf course there is such a benefit to us. I just leave it alone and keep it, everyone else is asking for more money for everything else he does that he can't get around and we have control of keeping him as a happy client. And I just like to, and I haven't heard in one bad thing anywhere about anything about golf course. You know, it's a pride of the city and, and the benefit to all citizens and tourists. So I, I wouldn't want, I wouldn't want to make anything harder on, on him or the, or the institution at all. Oh, that's my.
Okay, thank you. Okay, before we get down to discussion, I'm going to open it up to public comment. Don't think we have any, but I need to open it up. Sir, you have some public comment? Please. Absolutely. Please step up.
Actually, it's federal law that we have to allow you.
Actually, since, since I am here today and this topic came up, I did want to express to the council my thanks. Because in all honesty, I have been at that golf course off and on for twenty something, almost thirty years. And I can tell you that it has definitely improved over the last few years. And I think it's really advantageous that the city has it and works with these guys on it. Again, I appreciate it. And I know that you don't have any other public comments, so I thought I'd throw it out there that it really is a beneficial thing. It's a big draw for Bulton, I believe. A lot of people come from out of the area to it. And I think you guys should just consider that when you're thinking about this.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Any other public comment? I'm closing public comment then bringing it back for discussion. We're supposed to go over a few of the items. I'm just going to throw them out.
Madam Mayor, if I can chime in, I, I think I've heard some consensus on the part of the council on a lot of this as well as quite a bit of willingness to be, to be flexible from Mr. Brown's perspective. And with the exception of a couple of items here, I think most of this can be handled without a negotiation here in open session, which was really our goal was to not have this negotiated right now. And, and Rose can jump in if I'm leaving anything out that I, that, that we don't really have direction on, but I think right now we've got, we've got fair direction or it seems to be fair direction that our consensus that the, the fees not be changed at this point in time. So what I would like to point out for clarification from the council or direction from the council is what your thoughts might be on an extension on a term. Whether it be five years flat and then we go out to RFP again after five years, whether it be five years with another one or two extensions added on to that, whatever the council's desire is on that, we can bring that into negotiation here with Mr. Brown moving down the road. So we've dealt with the fees issue, the, the maintenance and operations side of things. I think we can deal with, Rose has put language in there that would allow a, a good deal of flexibility on the part of the city, keeping the standards in place, but allowing the city to be flexible with it in the event that something comes up and it's, it's evident that, that holding to that standard isn't reasonable. We can deal with that and I think to, to everyone's satisfaction. The issue of city events, whether we want to reserve the right to have city events, whether it be one a year, four a year, whatever. And then whether or not if we do have a city event that there, there's any sort of kind of compensation or anything to Mr. Brown for his operation. And, and if, if that's something you'd like to investigate, we'd be happy to, to work that into the negotiations as well. And I, I think we're, I think we're pretty clear. If we're going to leave it at a twelve fifty a month, we don't need to deal with the issue of books. We don't need to deal with the issue of licensing or licensees reports to the city. I think that is, is pretty clear. Rose, am I leaving anything out? We need direction on beyond that.
Um, I think just a portion on the green fees if with that quick discussion from the city attorney, do, is there, do we need to state a specific limit on there so that the green fees aren't increased and an unreasonable amount to justify us keeping the lease at the, at the rate that it is?
And then our, our thought on that, when Rose and I discussed this was that, that the only concern that we had about leaving the greens fees up entirely to the licensee would be that if greens fees went up an inordinate amount one year, the city council might take some abuse from the public on that in terms of a backlash. So to avoid something like that, we could allow Mr. Green to set green fees where he likes. However, we might require city approval in the event that any single year greens fee increases exceed eight percent or ten percent, something like that.
I think that's perfect. That's, if it exceeds a certain percentage threshold, then we talk about it. Otherwise.
Otherwise.
Yeah.
I just can't imagine them raising green fees to the point that people stop coming. The whole point is to keep, it's a, it's a municipal course, pretty much. It's city owned and the whole idea is to get as many people down there as you can. I, I'm kind of surprised First T, you're not doing First T anymore. I mean, yeah, I know the rec department has, they, they teach. What, what happened?
Well, if I'm brutally honest about it, the money doesn't stay locally and local kids don't really benefit from that program. And it's a national program that is unfortunately not all that great. Local golf course or the local program that we have now benefits the local youth and we don't charge anything. So instead of the First T charging the kids and keeping the money, we just have a great junior program that's local.
I like that.
It just seems to be a better fit.
Thank you. I was just curious because you know, you see all the ads in First T and it's such a big deal.
That ad at Pebble Beach was over a million dollars. That one single ad, where you get the money comes from. Like those types of programs are, are big programs and it takes a lot of money, a lot of people to drive those programs and it comes off the back of small municipal golf courses like this that could have a great junior program for people like me that can't afford big, huge golf program. My daughter could go down and play golf and not, not have to pay a ridiculous amount of money. She could go down and hit balls for free at a local golf course sponsored locally.
Yeah.
It just feels better for us. So that's what happened with.
Thank you. Thank, I, I had to ask, didn't I? Thank you very much.
Are you guys opposed to the term extension of another five years?
I think a five year with the potential five year extension to it, we've never done an RFP, have we, since?
Since the initial one. Oh, I don't believe we have.
Yeah.
Well, I think we could leave the door open for that, that there's any kind of an issue with that, with that extension after five years. Then we could go out for RFP, but I don't think we really should put that, that it must be in the end of five years. We can, we, we can allow a five year. Option for. Five years and then an option for an additional extension subject to agreement of both parties and.
That's perfect.
You've got to have something.
Yeah.
In the books.
Yeah.
The city events, I still think, I mean, I don't think the city abuses it.
I, I think it's fine just as it is. I think that you should have that. I would, I would want that. And I don't think there needs to be compensation. Our only problem was with the single event and the one single burner cost us about seven hundred dollars. And that was, it was easier to pay it than it was to fight over it.
Got it. Got it.
All about it. We're all on board for it. We love the most wonderful event down there.
I love, I love showing off your golf course.
I would like to add in there though, that if there is any accidental damage like that, that we do take care of it. You know, I mean, if it's a city, yeah, if it's a city.
I think you should have come to us, Mike. We probably, you did.
I went to the city manager and there was.
Not this one.
I remember, I remember him. I remember him.
They said it was easier for me just to replace it than it was to rock the boat. We're very happy down there. And if it's, if it's putting up another shade cloth, behind us in the lawn. So I think they could leave it in there. If I were you, I would want it. For me personally, it's four loss, it's four days of lost revenue.
The rent is not going up. And thank you.
Yeah, I think as long as we just, if it's, you know, if our event accidentally causes damage, we take care of it.
And I do not see the city having four events down the year. Although I have to say, we should, and I've got to tell you, that car show was incredible.
Premium.
Sixteen thousand dollars raised that day for charity.
That was incredible.
There wasn't one single toothpick paper left behind. It was the largest collection of thirty two boards on the west coast. And the one that would have happened last year would have doubled in size and would have been the largest collection in the history of the country.
Wow.
It was, it was pretty spectacular. Okay, you've got direction?
Wait. Time out. Yeah, I think we ought to go with the five day extension with the five day, with the five year extension with, with an option for a re, renegotiation. And, and I agree with everybody up here that the twelve fifty, I mean, we're, we're like, we're not here to make the money on that.
And I was thinking thirteen, but you know, I.
Wow, a gouge amount of fifty bucks. It's not like we need the money. Don't ever say that aloud. Oh, yeah, we're almost, we're almost broke. Yeah, we're, yeah, we're almost broke.
We represent our residents, our constituents. And this is like our Botanic Garden. This is another one of Bulton's just incredible jewels.
Energy.
Right, but.
Energy made.
No.
And I, and I think really going forward and I think that, that Greg and you and Mike should get together and go over this. I'm, I, I don't know that we should approve this right now.
No.
But let's go over this and whatever Mike wants to pull out of there or says, you know, some of these things, and I did read through there and I'm like, cart pass, I've never had a cart pass, you know, things like that. And I know it's just based on a, a standard lease agreement for a golf course, but this should be tailored really to your golf course. So I'm going to give you some homework to go through there and say, this is not practical, this is not practical, this is not practical. Bring it to these guys and let them take a look at it, rewrite it, bring it back to us. I saw there were a lot of red line outs, but.
Things like right off the bat, I haven't had Sierra Third though, six years ago. It was liquidated years ago. So for me, if you represented that company, I'm already in breach of that contract.
Right. I saw a lot of the red line, you know, all the red writing in here was to be, you know, moved out of there and whatever else cases, but bring us back a clean copy.
We will. Well, if the city council, assuming that that's the direction you want to give, if the city council wants to move forward on this, we would recommend that you allow the month to month extension of the existing contract until we bring back a revised contract for the city council's approval.
And are we, do we bring that? Is it customary to bring it back before us or is it not something that we give you the authorization to enter?
I, I would suggest because you don't know what's in it, you're going to want to see it before it's. Greg will want to weigh in on that too, I'm sure, but.
Yeah, no, I definitely want to bring this one back. But if, if we can have at least sixty days just to talk it through, your direction is very clear. We, we absolutely will not be recommending any additional consultants to look at it. We, we know what we need to do, but given the holiday, I think just the flexibility to take this into February and bring it to you at one of your two meetings in February would be, would be appropriate.
Madam Mayor, if I can, and, and one other caveat here is, is I think that if we are going to use that property, I mean, even though we own it, and it is cutting into your revenue, I think there should be some discussion about us reimbursing Mike and his dad Mick for that use of that property if it's going to be, you know, substantial amount. I mean, I know there's agreement in there now that, you know, we have X amount of events or whatever else in there, but if, if we really wanted to have something. events or whatever else in there. But if we really wanted to have something or like, like if we brought a fair or something there that was going.
Our fest. Oh, my God, Mike, the fair is going to look beautiful on the first fairway.
We'll we'll discuss that and we'll 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 include something along that line.
Right, that if there's going to be some kind of a financial burden or impact, like Lisa just said, that we could reimburse the the purveyors.
I'm sure we can. I'm sure we can find a balancing point there someplace.
All righty. We're good.
How the greens looking?
Rose, are you are you satisfied with it? I think we have direction.
Terrific. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much. We will be there.
You've done an amazing job. It really is pretty.
This is Gary, so I take all credit, but he does all work.
Thanks, Gary.
Just getting started.
Thank you, gentlemen.
So he makes you look good then.
Thank you. Good night, Mike.
Okay. Approval of AT&amp;T lease of city owned property, Mr. Wolf.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. In twenty nineteen, the city was contacted by a by representatives of AT&amp;T seeking to locate a wireless telecommunications facility here in the city. Their initial proposals for locations included both private and public properties, but all seemed to have the 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 one consistent characteristic of requiring a tower in excess of eighty feet. And then I believe in one case it was considerably higher than eighty feet. Clearly, that was not going to fit in with the visual character of our city. Staff took a look at what they were requesting, recognized the goal they were trying to reach and realized that there was a city owned piece of property that would allow them to reach that goal without having to build the tower quite that high. We had them start discussions with our planning and public works departments regarding the use of a portion of our reservoir site, our southern reservoir site located at just north of the intersection of Central and Avenue Flags. Just north of the dog park, actually.
Is that where the reservoir is?
Yes, that's the reservoir up at the top of the hill. The the location was suitable for AT&amp;T. They can accommodate or that site can accommodate their their needs. They would need to build a thirty five foot tall tower, which is much more reasonable. Tower that size is easily I use the term loosely camouflaged to make it appear to be a tree. And the further that is from developed areas, the more convincing that camouflage actually is. So this seems to be an ideal location. It allows them the coverage they need, which will improve wireless service within the city here. There are notable areas within the city where AT&amp;T service is spotty at best. As well as providing considerable additional coverage along the one on one highway corridor, which is what their primary goal, I believe, with this particular facility was. The agreement that has come out of this is about a year in the making. It's a very complex agreement. There's been a lot of back and forth. It's the first time the city has had to address something like this. It's it's something I've been through before, but it's it's never really easy. But I think we've come through with what is now a workable agreement for both AT&amp;T and for the city. In addition to providing AT&amp;T what it wants, it provides the city revenue to in the amount of twenty five hundred dollars per month, and that will be an increase on that of two percent annually moving forward for the duration that they occupy this particular facility. There are plans attached to the the staff report here in addition to the agreement, and I am happy to answer any questions. Rose and Andrea are here as well to answer any questions you have about the plans or the agreement. The location of the reservoir site, any anything of that nature. I would, however, caution the city council not to get too far in depth into the plans because the actual design and the approval of the design would be the purview of the planning commission through its conditional use permit process, which will take that will go to hearing sometime, I believe, in January. So January, okay. So at this point, I'm happy to to end my report here and leave the floor open to the city council for any questions. Our planning director, public works director are here to answer questions, and our city attorney can certainly chime in on the agreement as well. So on to my report here.
Thank you very much. Questions?
Comment slash question. When I first saw this come up and we were talking about it with Scott, I reached out about the safety issues with the tower and being that close to developed areas. So I'm totally confident in the answer you gave me, but I thought that it might be a good, you know, brief overview just to spit out for the public if they're listening, because that was the first thing that came to my mind is I don't really want a tower and radiation. And, you know, you hear all these crazy things and you think like, kind of scary.
Some residents who seriously.
Right. So I just thought it might be good if you gave them.
I'm I'm happy to do that. But as as this teeters into the legal end, if Greg would prefer to go there, I will be happy to allow him to make that.
Yeah, whoever. I just thought it might be a good thing for people to hear.
Okay. All you.
I don't think that was.
Well, actually, I'm okay.
Pass the buck.
Either way. Cities in general are are limited in their discretion to approve or deny permits regarding wireless telecommunications facilities. There the the limiting factor in this tends to be the telecommunications act, federal telecommunications act. And there's a couple of them. I'm not sure which one it is. But in any case, there is federal law which preempts the city's abilities to to deny wireless communications facilities except in certain instances. Those instances tend to be more along the lines of aesthetic issues, less along the lines of health and say, well, safety issues are one thing. Health issues are allowed as well. However, the federal government has made a determination officially that wireless telecommunications facilities that meet federal standards are deemed to be safe for the public. There is obviously some dispute about that out there, but as far as the city's ability to regulate these facilities based upon those factors, since the federal government has come down and said, we deem it safe, we're preempted from using those as factors to determine any type of deviation from our in our discretion to whether or not these get approved or not. And it was kind of awkward, but hopefully that covers the base at least a little bit.
And and let me just follow up on that. That is what goes to the planning commission. That's in our role as a governmental permitting entity. If AT&amp;T in this case shows us that they will meet federal government standards, our ability to consider radiation or anything coming from the radiation is is foreclosed. The federal government says if they meet, if if they meet the federal standards, that's good enough. But again, that's in our governmental role as a permitting entity. If you, as the council, have an issue with leasing the land, you have discretion to lease or not lease. Now, if you don't lease your land to them, they may very well find other land nearby, lease that, and then come in for a permit, and we would still be foreclosed at the planning commission level from taking any of these these health or radiation issues into account. So the fact that they're looking at at your land gives you the right to say no tonight, in which case there would not be a planning commission hearing on a permit. But as I say, they they definitely need the one on one covered. They need that part of the city and out into the county land covered. So the city having, you know, being able to to see something good from it that can be used for the people is is sort of a counterbalance for you to consider.
And and along that line, if they were to come back, if the city council were to to decline to lease the property to them and they were to come back to us with another facility, in all likelihood, it would be a facility that would be requesting a a very tall tower, which which is really the primary factor we were trying to avoid here. So so that's.
Okay.
Hopefully, that answers the question.
Okay, any other questions before we go to public comment?
The council questions?
Council questions. Vice Mayor. A question.
Is there any other telephone companies looking for antenna space up there? Or is it is this some kind of exclusive deal or because other places they have more than one tower or?
There are. There are a number of wireless carriers out there. At this point, we're not aware of any that are looking for space right here in the area, but I can almost guarantee we will see additional requests for for facilities here in the near future. However, what we're likely to be seeing in what I expect to be kind of a flood of requests will deal with what are referred to as small cell facilities for the 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 five G technology that's rolling out right now. These will not wind up being very tall towers. These will wind up being very small facilities that'll wind up going on buildings, on on light poles. You know, very, very small, very short range type of facilities. It's it's right now kind of a hot topic on the legislature that's trying to pass a small cell bill right now that generally cities are opposed to because it takes away cities discretion to even review these things for aesthetic purposes. But this particular agreement, if I'm not mistaken, is exclusive to AT&amp;T, does not require co-location because to require co-location would have resulted in a taller facility. In my experience, if you get a situation like this, you're actually better off allowing another carrier to put up their facility up top. More of these types of camo tree camouflage type facilities tend to lend some context and tend to appear to be more natural to have more than one tree up there. So we're probably better off going with a smaller structure right now and dealing with other ones as they come in. But that's something we'll look at as as we as we move forward. We've been in discussions with a consultant to work with the city to to deal with the carriers as they come in to make sure that we're getting the the most bang for our buck and 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 we're 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 getting the best the best results we can get within the limitations that we have. We'll bring a a contract back to the council here within the next few months. But to answer your question, yes, there are other carriers out there. No, no one's expressed interest at this point, but if they do, we'll be happy to discuss a location with them that will that will work for them and be of the least impact to our residents.
So just looking at just a small spot there with a room for one next to it or there isn't, or I don't know if that's something would be open to or or there was any interest.
For a forest up there.
There there is room. There there's probably room for another another one at least up there, maybe two, but that's really up to the the carriers and their RF engineers to to tell us whether you know, that there are some spacing requirements sometimes, but they they can get pretty creative when they have to. So well.
I think another question.
We need to.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor. Another question.
Yeah, they I was just, I think we, does the city own the two parcels there, the APN? The the one north of it, zero, two, three. And then the one we're on is zero, one, nine. I was just.
The other reservoir, isn't that on Norm Williams' property?
Yeah, I'm talking about the 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 adjacent parcel. So the the parcel adjacent to our reservoir is a small, it's square. And it's a parcel that's on top of the hill there. I didn't know if we owned more parcels there or just the one parcel where the reservoir is. I know we have an easement there.
Yeah, we just we just own. I believe we just own the one parcel. And the other one is just an access easement that we have.
From my understanding from years ago, there is a a proper parcel there north of the reservoir. It's a I mean, it's etched out there and that's in the city. And then there's another parcel with the number ending in zero, two, nine. That's part of the hill. I was wondering who owns that parcel? Or is it? Does anybody know?
Are you talking about that for future use?
We probably have to get back to you on that.
Okay, yeah, I'm just, I just didn't know if that's somebody that if they put it over the fence, it's on someone else's parcel. That was my question. So that's all.
Okay, thank you. I had one quick question. The the beautification of this tower, turning it into a tree. Does our planning commission have any input in what type of tree or what kind of visual that's going to look like?
Yes, the planning commission has discretion on that. We have worked with the our planning department has worked with the applicant to produce, I believe it's a, isn't it a mono, it's referred to as a mono elm, is that or is it the eucalyptus? Okay. Yeah.
At some point, there was one type of tree proposed.
Right.
Okay.
But we've.
But there is input.
There they do have input and and we've already got quite a bit of detail drawn up in the conditions regarding that the this the brand of of the material that's going to be used for camouflage, the the need to to bring in bark, to bring in a certain type of leaf, a certain branch count, camouflage socks for the the antenna panels themselves. And we've we've pretty much covered those bases, but but the commission can certainly add to that.
We live in a beautiful town and and I see a need for this and I like the revenue from it, but I want to make sure it's something that's going to look nice, too. Okay. Any other questions before I go to public comment? Hearing none, I'm opening up public comment. Claire, do you know if we have any public comment out there?
We do not.
Then I am closing public comment, bringing it back to council for discussion.
I move that we approve the AT&amp;T lease with the city owned property.
All righty, a motion and a second.
Councilmember King.
Hi.
Councilmember Lewis.
Hi.
Councilmember Andreasy.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Sanchez.
Hi.
Mayor Sierra.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Now for the heart of the meeting. Appointments to boards, commissions and committees. Claire was kind enough to leave us a schedule of all the different committees. The only thing I do not see on here is aquatics. And who the representatives are. Pardon?
I was upset at one of these committees, but I'm over it.
Okay. Okay. Does. No, no, I mean, what I usually do is we go right down the order and we we ask if anybody else is interested in it since we are, as you can see by the list, we have grown quite a bit. Is there anybody who wants to change anything on there? I'm I'm very happy with what I have. If anybody else wants to.
I just had one thing I was interested in. So I'm good with everything. I was just interested in the League of California Cities. It's only an annual meeting, which is good because I work full time. So one a year is something I can definitely accommodate. But I thought it sounded interesting if either one of you were less interested in doing it this year, but I'm not so interested that I would fight you over it.
So usually the League of California's voting delegate is the mayor and vice mayor.
Oh, that's why. Okay.
Then so so this would change next year to be Sierra and King.
Totally.
And then if Sierra or King couldn't make it, then we would just be thrilled to have you as a voting delegate.
I'm okay with that.
The voting delegate gets to stay until the very end of the last day and usually hit all the Friday afternoon traffic coming home. So usually the mayor and vice mayor fight over who gets the duty.
Nice.
So you know, I I have no problems.
No worries. That is totally fine. And I'm good with everything I have to say as is unless anyone else.
Councilman or Councilman King.
Be careful what you wish for. No, you know, having that information.
I'm not a mayor, ma'am, drop. So Vice Mayor King now.
He would be the he would be the alternate. Yeah. As far as I know, that's the only change. JPIA, Ed, you're still on that one, aren't you? Is that one? Yes. JPIA, you are the member with Felicia Lewis as the alternate. Is that correct? I thought.
Yes.
Councilman King was, but.
No, I'm and I don't know if it's written in our documentation, but I'm CCWA on second alternate. Is that what you have? I mean, you could look into it, but I think John's the alternate and I'm the second. Yeah, okay.
Yeah. And that makes sense, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I appreciate Ed's been doing this for years and he knows his water, which I truly appreciate. He also handles the the groundwater with our vice. Uh, he also handles the um, the groundwater with our vice mayor as the alternate. And they both, they're both our watermen. They say water is the new gold. And it's nice to have somebody who knows what they're doing in those positions. So that's good. Uh, the aquatics, I don't have it here. Are both of, you're the.
That's an ad hoc. I think I'm primary in John's though, but that, I don't think it's listed here because it's an ad hoc.
It's just an ad hoc, but, but if we want to have a committee, I'd be glad to help on it.
Got it.
And the, if, if, if the council wants to change the composition of an ad hoc committee, we can bring it back for discussion or we can leave it the same moving forward. It's up to, it's up to your.
I've never seen a conflict on that. So I don't think it's.
Working fine.
No.
Yeah.
Okay. And the only other one, I thought you might be interested, uh, the joint use. We just have to work with the school to make sure that the schedule is changed so that it is within your hours. The uh library, um, the library advisory committee meets quarterly, right, John? You are the member. I'm the backup on it. I usually, I like to attend the meetings, but I wasn't able to make it yesterday.
They, they're going to be on Zoom for the next couple of months. So um, they have to stay monthly now because of the Zoom uh law, but uh then it's quarterly. Yeah. It's usually quarterly and they go to Kachuma Lake and like 10 on Wednesday or something like that.
It's, it's uh four times a year, 10 to noon on a Wednesday. And uh, it, uh, it's Zoom meetings and when they do it in person, it's at Lake Kachuma. So I don't know if you would be interested in that one or if that's not going to work with your.
If it stayed to Zoom, it would be fine, but 10 AM in the middle of a workday is kind of difficult.
Got it. So, okay. So we're going to leave things the way they are.
Yeah, unless it's a, someone can't do it.
Got it. Is everybody?
Yes, ma'am.
I just had to comment on the uh, the League of Cities. Um, is that, is that something, didn't, didn't we go, did I go to a League of Cities? So is that something that we went to Long Beach? Or is that just for only members? Or is that something open?
Long Beach was uh two years ago.
Two years ago.
Um, I just thought maybe Alicia would like to go as a guest on that, if she could fit something that we're invited to or it was just two people.
They've got the schedule on it for this year already. So make sure you take time off if you can.
Will be encouraged to attend that conference.
Yeah. Yeah. The classes are wonderful. You learn a lot.
Yeah, that's.
You can get some of your training done. And you don't have to be a voting delegate to go.
Well, that's even better because then I don't have to stay. So all I wanted to do is get the info. So I'm okay with this as it is.
No, all of us go. It's just.
Okay. So everybody's okay with, with the way things are. The only change then would be that on the league voting delegate, it would be Sierra and King and everything else is going to stay the same. Yes, we're in agreement?
I think so.
Wonderful. That was easy. Moving on to city managers.
Do we need a motion on that or?
Oh, and, and do I need public comment?
Is it consensus, Greg?
Uh, I'm, I'm agreeing. I think this is.
I seconded her.
It's just, I think it's consensus, Greg, isn't it? Because we're just agreeing to take those committees.
Yeah. Yes, that's fine.
Okay. And public comment, I'm opening it and closing it because. Let's our police chief had any public comment on this.
Don't forget to fill out your 700 forms.
Okay. City managers report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll be very brief tonight. I wish I had more to talk about, but thankfully I don't. Uh, we had a, as the mayor mentioned, as several of you mentioned, we had a great um weekend this past weekend with Winterfest and all the activities that took place. I would also like to thank our sheriff's department and our fire department for joining us in the parade. Not only did they make the parade possible for us, but they made the parade um much more enjoyable for the spectators. I know my kids just love to see the fire trucks and the police cars go by. It was great. Um, thank, uh, well, additionally, I'll just let the city council know the only other item I have is uh for the public's benefit, uh, we have kind of an odd schedule this year for holidays because Christmas and New Year's uh both fall on a Saturday, which throws things into a tizzy. So um, the holiday week um between uh Christmas and New Year's will only, city hall will only be open for three days. It'll be open Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. Monday will be an observed holiday. Friday will be an observed holiday. And then the 24th, which is the Friday prior to Christmas, obviously that will be an observed holiday as well uh for Christmas Eve. Um, and then, uh, yes, our holidays are the 24th, 27th and 31st.
Okay.
Okay. Other than that.
We do, we do have the assert training too. Do you want to?
Training is in January.
22nd.
I believe it's the 22nd at the Willemson Barn at 9:30, 10 o'clock, something like that. Um, it would, the information is available um uh in the latest newsletter, the old buzz that came out. And I believe it's on uh the city's website as well.
And you don't have to pre-register. Just show up for three hours of training.
Three hours of cert training.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alrighty. And with that, I adjourn this meeting until Thursday, January 13th at 6 o'clock, 2022.